All right, welcome to the May 21st special planning meeting, I'll rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, please be seated. All right, Jill, would you mind doing the roll call, please?
Mary Ann Bond.
Here.
Tom Yakitis.
Here.
John Ott.
Here.
Joe Yen.
Here.
Mike Baum.
Here.
Mike Hammett is absent.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll open the public comment period for anything that it will not be discussed on the, in the meeting tonight. So if you have anything you'd like to say that is not part of the meeting tonight, please feel free to stand up, sign in, and then you can speak to us.
Nobody online.
Nobody online, all right. All right, thank you. We'll close the public comment period. Right, we'll go right into the first agenda item here. This is item PZC 2025-005 Spartan Athletic Park, 1630 Jericho Road in the southwest corner of Jericho Road and Edgeline Drive. We'll open the public hearing for the consideration of annexation of the property. So that's A, 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 I'm sorry, A1, item A1. So I believe Director App, oh, Tony?
Yeah, Aurora University has submitted a petition to annex two properties into the Village of Montgomery. Both of these properties are adjacent to the existing Spartan Athletic Complex on Jericho Road. One of the parcels is directly adjacent and east, one is directly adjacent and west. The one to the west is currently vacant, the one to the east has a house on it. They are proposing a baseball field on the western lot, the undeveloped lot. They have no current plans for the eastern lot as of this time. The baseball field proposal falls within the PUD of the existing park. And so they are asking to, when it comes to zoning, it'll default into R1. They're asking to then incorporate those into the existing PUD so that all the rules that currently exist would simply apply to the new lots as well. Because there's no development actually being brought before you currently, there isn't much in the way of engineering or anything like that. We are asking a change to the PUD that had previously said any extension of Edgeline would be required, but since we no longer have any plans as a village to bring that further south, we're amending that PUD to no longer have that requirement. So we are, staff is recommending approval with the following conditions: Approval of Platts by the village engineer, Submittal of Platts of Disconnection for Jericho Road, and adoption of the findings of fact outlined in this staff report. And I was here for your consideration.
All right, thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, I'm Bruce Goldsmith.
Just one second. Oh, yeah, oh, sorry. I guess you can introduce yourself, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm Bruce Goldsmith with Dykman Law Firm, representing Aurora University. With me is Executive Vice President of the University, Jeff King.
All right, thank you. All right, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
I do.
And have you signed in already?
They're good.
They're good? Oh, they're good, okay. All right, you're good, you're good.
I'll do it at the end.
Thank you.
So he gave kind of a complete explanation. I'll just give a couple of details. As was common in properties that were farms originally, they went to the center of the road. So we owned to either the center of Jericho or the fireside of Jericho, depending on the location. So we understand that the village has an agreement with City of Aurora for maintenance of the road, which requires this piece of road to go to City of Aurora. So we will do that once this is all approved and we're next to the village. Other than that, we have some expectation of using the western property, possibly for a baseball field. Eastern property is just going to square off the lots on Jericho so that we own all the frontage and the university will decide over time what else they want to do down there. As you may know, it's a series of athletic facilities, a multipurpose stadium, and they have, the building out there on the east side is for wrestling and other activities. And Mr. King would be happy to answer any specific questions about the university.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We'll open the public comment period for this item. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please step forward, sign in.
Mark Lyons, 1131 Monticello Drive, Aurora.
All right.
Aurora University has not been good neighbors.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Aurora University has not been good neighbors since they moved in next to the Pine Knoll subdivision. They've disrupted our water supply, adding sulfur to our water, added a football field that wasn't part of their original plan, have lights on very early in the morning, play music as early as 5:00 a.m. We already have extra traffic coming with the Habitat for Humanity subdivision across the street, plus adding more speeding students running to the sports complex, running late will just cause more issues and headaches for us. We ask you to please be considerate of the police department not having to deal with these issues and deny the college their request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online? All right. Oh, I just thought of one more.
Good evening.
Good evening. State your name, please.
Michael Murphy. 1661 Jericho Road, Aurora.
All right, thank you. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
My question probably is directed to Mr. King, who I believe is here with the attorney, regarding the property at 1625 Jericho Road. I live across the street from that home, and I'm curious to know what's going to happen with it because I understand it's going to be torn down. And there's another home that's just adjacent to that, I'm not sure the address of it. It's on the far east side, it's before that little road going to that quarry. But I guess, Mr. King, what my question is, is what are your intentions of tearing that home down and when do you plan to do it?
We'll answer any questions that are brought up during the public hearing time. We'll ask them to answer those after we get everybody's questions.
Will that be at the end of the meeting tonight or during the Aurora?
During the Aurora University petition.
Okay, because I wasn't going to stay for everything, that's why I wanted to...
No, no, no. We won't make you do that.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am, okay.
All right, any additional comments? All right, if we don't have any additional comments, we will close the public comment period. All right, commissioners, any questions, discussion?
Yes, are we just approving the annexation of the two parcels or the baseball field too?
Right now, we're doing A1, which is the annexation of the property itself.
The baseball field is permitted as part of the PUD. So once, if the commission and the board approves the amendment to the PUD to include these parcels, once annexed and approved of the PUD, they will just go through the final PUD process with staff. So that plan will just have to go to the village board for approval and then go through permit process. It doesn't come back to the plant commission.
I'm just curious, will this be the varsity baseball field or a practice field? I'm not sure it makes a difference, but...
If the petitioners wouldn't mind coming down and answering that question.
It would be our varsity field.
Okay.
We currently have an agreement, we play off a Stewart right now at the park district out there. But we've had some concerns and issues. The field got tore up this spring, so we couldn't play on it. So we were practicing and playing all over the suburban area because the field wasn't available most of the time. Because it was too early in the spring to repair the grass.
As the answer to the one question, it is intended that the houses would be torn down in a reasonable period of time when they get the necessary permits. As to the more general comment in the beginning, we went through elaborate approval process for Spartan Athletic Park. As part of that, lighting was specifically specified with downward facing lighting. Stormwater was, met the full requirements of the county ordinance and was approved by the village engineer. And we have a active person who handles complaints, right now it's Jeff. And we've had no complaints from the neighbors, so we're happy to investigate anything that concerns the neighbors after doing the operation of the park. But we've actually had a very good relationship with the neighbors for the last number of years since the fields were approved. And this was approved from the beginning as a multipurpose field for soccer and football and the other activities that are now on. I think they do lacrosse and other things there as well. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Anything else from the commissioners? All right, we'll close the public hearing period. And do we have a motion? We're just doing the annexation. Yeah, we're just doing the annexation.
So this would just be a motion to approve, recommend approval of the annexation?
Well, I'd make a motion to approve PZCC 2025-005, to approve the annexation of the Spartan Athletic Park.
I second.
That be with the conditions in the staff report and adoption of the findings of fact?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Jill, please.
Commissioner Baum?
Baum, yes.
Commissioner Bond? Commissioner Yakitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes. All right. So that will go in front of the village board meeting on Tuesday, was it May 27? All right, the next up on the agenda is, again, PZC 2025-005 Spartan Athletic Park. This is for the second item on there, public hearing consideration for the amendment to special use of the PUD item here. So we'll open the public hearing. Tony?
Yep, the village has received a petition from Synergy Power.
This is still for...
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead. Yeah, this is for the, you're going, you can, you don't need me to do it.
Oh, I don't need you for that one.
You already went over it. So this would be amending the PUD to include the two parcels that have been recommended for annexation, one on the west side, one on the east side. And also would include the removal of the requirement for Edgeline Drive to be extended to the south end of the property.
Do petitioners have any additional comments? Okay, if not. All right, we'll open the public comment period for this item. Is anything additional anyone wants to say on this one? There's no one online. All right, we will close the public comment period and discussion for the board. Well, any additional questions? All right, if we don't have any additional questions, we'll close the public hearing period and then look for a motion in a second.
I'll have a motion approved, PZC 2025-005-2. Special use PUD with the following conditions: Approval of Platts, submittal of Platts, and the adoption of findings of fact.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Jill, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakitis?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is PZC 2025-006, Synergy Power, east end of Oakland Street. We'll do the first item here, public hearing, consideration of the annexation of property and rezoning upon annexation to a agriculture district. We'll open the public hearing this time.
Okay.
Tony?
Yep. The village has received a petition from Synergy Power to annex and rezone the property at the east end of Oakland Street, which is along Spencer Street. They'd like to develop it as a community solar installation. The property is currently being farmed, and it's about 21 acres. It is not located near any utilities. And as a result, along with some floodplain on the property, there's just not really any development potential for the site in any practical sense. We've had other people come and inquire and have immediately stopped as soon as they found out that it would be prohibitively expensive to bring water or sewer over there. Solar is one of the few uses out there that does not require water or sewer. And so this is one of the reasons why this petition is before you. The solar is a permitted, or is a special use in the agriculture district as well as industrial districts because of the location, because of the location's proximity to residential. Staff felt that agriculture would be a more appropriate zoning district for the location rather than industrial. However, our minimum lot size for the agriculture district is 40 acres. This site is only 21, so they would need a variance for that size. The panels would be sun tracking, so they would just be pivoting to follow the sun over the course of the day at the maximum inclination. So when they're the most vertical, they'd be about 34 feet tall, and then much shorter than that when they are more horizontal. Those panels will cover approximately 16 acres of the lot. And they'll be enclosed by a seven-foot-tall vinyl-coated chain-link fence. There would be an emergency access along the Gilman Trail as well, so there's a gate over there should their, you know, fire department or something like that need to access from a different direction. There is no lighting proposed for the site. There's very minimal traffic that would be generated. And as far as Spencer goes, the township and the village have come to an informal agreement that will be signed, you know, as the discussion continues. But basically, the agreement is that the village would maintain Spencer Street, but that the township would continue to plow it since they're already plowing over in that direction. In terms of landscaping and screening, the site is already screened pretty well from the north, east, and south sides. There's tree lines all around it, as well as from the southern half of the west side. The petitioner has proposed planting evergreen shrubs along Spencer Street on the outside of the fence to provide screening to the businesses and homes on the other side of Spencer. Staff recommends making final engineering condition of approval, as well as approval of the floodplain report and stormwater report, and that final approval from the fire district also be made a condition. And we recommend the following additional conditions: Final approval of the final landscape plan, which would provide adequate landscape screening along Spencer. Restoration of the site once the site is, once the use is discontinued. And adoption of the findings of fact outlined in this staff report.
All right, thank you, Tony. Is the petitioner here who would like to speak? Please come up. All right, state your name.
Chad Chabazi, Senior Vice President, Synergy Power.
All right, thank you. And do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
First of all, thank you so much for having me here today. My name is Chad Chabazi. I've been with Synergy Power for over 16 years, helped start the company. We're a 50-person, a US-based company. We've developed and built over 450 of these projects across the US. The company mission here at Synergies is to spread economic benefits of clean energy projects to local communities. We've partnered with many municipal partners here in Illinois, including the Village of Diamond, Village of Machesney Park, City of Rockford, and Pontiac Airport, and City of Pontiac. If you look to the right, there's a project we installed at the Indianapolis Airport, right next to the airport. It's one of our verticals that we focus on is airport projects. We've been in business for over 16 years, and we have quite a bit of commercial, community solar and utility solar project experience, including mapping, development, engineering, construction, and field service. We also own and operate most of our projects. We built our bonding capacity from $0 in 2008, and we're now up to $300 million in bonding capacity, which we're really proud of. And it shows our ability to execute on projects. This is one of the examples of how we work with different villages. This particular project is in the Village of Diamond that we're developing now. We work with the village and the landowner. They required a detention pond on the southeast side of this project for their expansion. The village is looking to expand their infrastructure, and we were able to work with the landowner and the village to make that happen. We're in the late stages of development on that project. This is a project that we work with the Village of Machesney Park. The area that you see with the modules will look very similar to the project that we're doing. This project is just about a megawatt smaller than the project that we're building or developing at Envy Spencer here in Montgomery. You can see the neighbors just next to the project, and then there's homes on the, across the main road over there, off Perry'sville. This land was actually very similar to this particular piece of property in that there was very little use for the property. The village took over the site in, essentially in a foreclosure, and it just sat there. And one great thing about these projects is it creates a buffer for further development as far as the neighbors are concerned. So it's the quietest neighbor you'll have other than a cemetery. Minimal noise, traffic, there's no, basically no traffic at these sites. We have a few folks coming in a few times a year to check on the modules, but it's essentially maintenance-free. So we talked a little bit earlier, Mr. Farugia mentioned some of the project description. We're looking at about 17 acres of a 21-acre parcel. The system size is just under three-megawatt AC. Again, minimal noise, no glare, minimal traffic. And the site is owned by Mr. Oscar Ochoa. He's in favor of the project. We have a site control agreement with him. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today. He is going to try to make the city council meeting, or village council meeting, I apologize. But he is in favor of the project and will provide that support as well when needed. The site, I believe, is going to be ag-zoned, and it's like Mr. Farugia mentioned, on the corner of Spencer Street at the intersection of Oakland Street. So this is a layout of what the project will look like. To the, if you can see, it's a little bit hard to tell on this layout, but there's about 20-foot trees on the southeast, northeast, northwest corner of the site. It's a triangle-shaped site. And on the west side, we will be placing our own vegetative screening. That was a commitment that we made to the village. But the trees on the southeast and north are about 15 to 20 feet tall. So they provide very nice vegetative screening all around the site, with the exception on the west side, which, again, we've committed to providing that screening. So what are some of the concerns or matters that we're looking at here? Strategic plan and policy, ordinance requirements to preserve the vision, goals, and values of the village while encouraging economic development through six initiatives. And then, if you look at the compliance section, focus on sustainability, invest in internal, external stakeholders, develop infrastructure facilities and resources. The minimum acreage Mr. Farugia mentioned is 20 acres for an ag-zone. In this case, we're asking for a variance of 21.6, so it's still a substantial portion of that 40 acres. The property values, we've done a number of property values here in the northern Illinois area, including many villages, and I'll go through that in a minute. But what we found is, the analysis shows that there's no impact to home values as well as no impact to abiding vacant residential or agricultural land. And we've done probably, I would say, over five studies over the last five, six years that we can share with you as well if needed. So the annexation, that's one of the benefits of this project is that we are asking to annex it into the Village of Montgomery. We've done this in many other jurisdictions. It provides all the benefits of annexation that we're aware of as far as bringing the property into the village. So it's a great gateway of adding that site to the village proper. On the variance requests, we request a variance to the minimum lot size that we mentioned. We're also seeking a variance to reduce the minimum lot size requirement from 40 to 21.6 acres to accommodate the proposed solar project. As Mr. Farugia mentioned, the site is in a floodplain, which makes it very, it's a low quality for other types of development. And again, if you look at the site and where we're putting it, it's going to place a buffer for other types of development, which I think will be good as far as, you know, traffic, noise, and some of the other nuisances that we mentioned. It's in a flood hazard, and part of it, I believe, is also in a floodway as well. So it's a good use for the land. And what we do is we typically put the modules at least a foot or two above the floodplain so as to prevent any sort of debris and the like from collecting under the modules. Again, no negative impact to local property values. In some cases, we've actually found a positive impact because of the reduction in noise traffic and other sorts of, you know, factories going up, for example, that cause pollution and the like. So this is a company called Kirkland Appraisals that's done several studies. We've also used Cone Resnick, which is an accounting firm that does these types of studies in northern Illinois. So what are some of the village benefits? We're going to offer, so this is a community solar project. So the way it works is, you don't have to have this project on your home or your roof. You can actually subscribe to the project and receive what's called the bill credit to save on your electric bills with ComEd. So we're offering residents and also businesses in the village 10% to 20% reduction off their utility bills, depending on what rate class they're on. We're going to use as much local union labor as possible. So typically, most of our electric work and mechanical work is done with union labor. So that's another benefit. We've also, we've committed to donating $200,000 to the village. 50% of that donation will be paid upon construction start, 50% upon final completion. We're doing this not just in Illinois. We're doing it in villages, cities, counties here in Illinois, but also in states like Maine, other states like California, so... So, so far, the company to date has donated over two million dollars to local communities from our projects. And because the parcel will be annexed into the village, that'll allow for, I believe, some more of the tax revenue. There's actually a tax regime for the solar projects where you get more property tax out of the project area because it's a solar project, it can be a solar project, than you would if it was another type of use. It's codified in statute here in Illinois. So, I don't want to take more of your time. Takeaways, project is in less developable flood area. Project complies with the solar ordinance requirements and the general requirements and benefits of the general plan of the community. And then the project generates significant community benefits. Two hundred thousand dollars for village infrastructure, ten to twenty percent energy savings for village residents. The annexation of twenty-one point six acres into the village. And number four, increased tax revenue for the village that we talked about. Ladies and gentlemen, that's my presentation. I thank you again for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions from you or the public.
Alright, thank you. Alright, now we'll open the public comment period for the synergy project. Is anyone on line again? Alright, one raise their hand? Alright, we will close the public comment period for this item here and we'll open up discussion for the board and questions to petitioner, if you have any. Board have any questions, comments for the petitioner?
I think we might have a public question. Maybe not.
I had closed it already, so, why don't we continue? Does the board, any questions for petitioner, discussion items? Alright, look for a motion to approve.
And this is for annexation and rezoning.
Marion?
Annexation, rezoning, and the special use and variations for synergy power.
With the conditions? With the conditions?
With the conditions, yes.
Can findings affect?
Right, can findings affect too?
Yes.
Okay. You got a tie. Alright, Joe, we have a motion and a second. Please, roll call please.
Mr. Bond, yes. Commissioner Yakitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Alright, motion's been approved. That will go in front of the village board on the next village board meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. Alright, so the next item on, I can't, I can't read these. Alright. Thank you. Alright, the next item is the second item of this one, the PZC twenty twenty-five zero zero six energy power. This is for the special use for the utility scale solar energy system. We'll open the public hearing and we've already gone through all the information already, right?
Steph has nothing to add.
Nothing to add. And then petitioner, anything to add? Alright, open the public comment period for this. I need to show comments. I will close the public comment period. Any additional discussion from the board for the special use? No, no comments. Alright, we will close the public hearing and I'll look for a motion to approve the second item, special use for utility scale solar energy system.
I'll go ahead and motion for the approval, PZC twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six for the special use and variation with the adoption of finding effects.
A second.
It's six.
Was it six, yeah?
It's six. Alright, we have motion and a second. Joe, roll call please.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakitis?
Yes.
Alright, motion's been approved. Again, this item will also go in front of the village board on the Tuesday, May twenty-seventh meeting. Alright, next item is the third item on this, on B here, which is PZC twenty twenty-five zero zero six energy power, public hearing and considerations of multiple variations from the UDO including Section eight twenty-one, Table twenty-one dot one for the ag district. For the lot, right? Ag approval? Alright. Yeah, lot size, alright, for the lot size. Alright, we'll open the public hearing for this item. Nothing additional from the staff?
Nothing additional from staff.
Nothing additional from the petitioner, right? Alright, we will open the public comment period. Any additional comments or questions for the petitioner or the village? Alright, we will close the public comment period. Does the bill's board, does the commission, commission have any comments or questions on this item?
No.
Alright, if we have no questions or concerns, we'll close the public hearing and we'll look for a motion in a second to move this forward.
Motion to approve, PZC two zero two-five dash zero zero six, the consideration of multiple variations and the findings of facts and the conditions.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Joe, please.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakitis?
Yes.
Alright, again, that one will also, that one's been approved and that will also go to the village board on the Tuesday, May twenty-seventh meeting. Next up on the agenda is Item C, which is PZC twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight, Wayside Cross, twelve thirty-three Douglas Avenue. Again, we'll go through all four items separately, but we'll open the public hearing for the first item here, which is the consideration of the text amendment for the club, lodge, or hall to unified development ordinance, Sections nine zero two, principal uses and structures, and thirteen dot zero two definition of terms. Okay, we'll open the public hearing for this item. Tony, please.
As the commission may recall, Wayside Cross Ministries came before the commission several weeks ago looking to construct a youth activity center for a existing program at Saint Olaf Church. It would allow that program to expand. They had asked to subdivide and rezone the property to be one neighborhood business, which would allow them to ask for a special use for indoor recreation. Due to concerns from residents and members of the village board, they have withdrawn that petition and submitted a new petition so that the existing R-one zoning would be maintained and still allow them to move forward with their project. So they're asking for a text amendment, which would change the definition of club, lodge, or hall to include a facility such as this, which is a special use in the, and also to add that as a special use in the R-one district. Staff also felt that doing it this way would be, have fewer implications down the road than if it were to amend the definition for indoor recreation or change where that use was allowed, that sort of thing, so. The facility that they have proposed hasn't really changed at all since the original petition. It's approximately twelve thousand square feet. The property is seven point seven one acres. They'd be splitting it roughly in half with one parcel. One of the newly created lots, having Saint Olaf Church in the parking area for that, as well as the new parcel, which is sort of an L shape. And the building, the new facility would be on the west side of the property. They do need a variance for that, sort of a regular lot shape. The UDO says that they should be rectangles as much as possible, but because of the existence of Saint Olaf Church, it's not practical for this subdivision. Access would be from Sherman Avenue. The parking lot is separate from Saint Olaf's parking lot. There is a possible connection that would be there, but the access would be separated. So overflow parking is a possibility with Saint Olaf if they come to an agreement on that. The site plan has stayed largely the same. There have been a couple of tweaks to landscaping and these parking lots, but by and large, it's functionally identical. They anticipate having thirty-five participants in their after-care program and approximately seventy in the summer for summer camps. They estimate that approximately seventy percent of the participants would be transported to the property by minibus or passenger van to minimize the the obligation of participants and their families, as well as minimizing traffic. Their proposed operating hours are from two PM to seven PM for the after-school programs and then from nine AM to four PM for weekday summer camps. They would have instructional sports leagues hosted at the facility on Saturdays and there would be no programming on Sundays. They would only be serving youth under the age of eighteen, that's listed in the report, so they would be beholden to that. They've requested two variations from the UDO. One is the lot shape and the other is to reduce the amount of landscaping required because of that lot shape, because it extends all the way to Douglas and that part of the area, or that eastern portion, sort of north of the church can't really be developed very practically because there are utilities running underneath, sort of diagonally across that part of the lot. And so that would remain as-is, which is just open field right now. And because there's no development there, the petitioner has requested that they only screen north of the new structure rather than all the way across since the views of the new facility would be relatively limited from those houses. They would still provide screening along the house that's to the south and east that's sort of hugging the parcel and then they would not need the screening for the Saint Olaf lot. In terms of lighting, they are proposing eighteen-foot-tall pole lights with down-facing fixtures. There would be six total, as well as sixteen down-facing wall and ceiling lights on the exterior of the proposed building. The photometric plan indicates a maximum of point-three-foot candles along the Saint Olaf Church lot line and point-one-foot candles at Krug Park lot line. The maximum foot candles permitted at a residential property line is half a foot candle and the plan shows a maximum point-one-foot candle to any point of the residential abutment property line. So, well under the requirement, the, you know, the maximum is point-five. The highest is point-one, so there's a lot of locations along that lot line where it's gonna be zero. Similarly, with Saint Olaf Church, a lot of it is also zero and they are well under the requirement, which is, for a non-residential property, is one foot candle. If you need any reminders, I'm happy to go into any details that you may not remember from the last presentation of that facility. Otherwise, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Village engineer approval of the final engineering plans and final plot of subdivision. Approval of the variation from Section seven point zero two to allow an irregularly shaped lot. And village board approval of the vacation of right-of-way for extending Elliott Avenue. This is for the preliminary plot of subdivision. We also recommend approval of the text amendment to the club, lodge, or hall use with the adoptions of the findings of fact contained in the staff report. I can go ahead and read the proposed change to the texts. Alright, so the current definition of club, lodge, or hall is a meeting recreational or social facility established for the use of the members and guests of a nonprofit or private organization. The proposed addition would be that club, lodge, or hall may include after-school programs and camps for children, but does not include daycare center or daycare home. Staff recommends approval of the special use with the following conditions. Staff approval of final landscape plan, staff approval of a final photometric plan, village engineer approval of the final engineering plans and stormwater report, fire district approval, the use of the facility shall be restricted to those described in the petitioner's letter of intent dated February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, and shall not include drug rehabilitation. The use shall be restricted to serving youth under the age of eighteen. Programming shall end by seven PM from Monday through Saturday and there will be no programming on Sunday. Should any problems stemming from insufficient parking be generated by the use of the facility, the property owner shall either provide the village with an agreement between the property owner and the church, on the adjacent church property, or they shall add additional parking spaces on the subject property adequate to relieve the problems. And then adoption of the findings of fact contained in the report. Staff also recommends approval for variations with the following conditions. Staff approval of a final landscape plan, staff approval of a final photometric plan, village engineer approval of the final engineering plans and stormwater report, fire district approval and adoption of the findings of fact contained in this report. Now it's here for your consideration.
Alright, thank you, Tony. Alright, does the petitioner have anything, are they present?
Hello, my name is Kristall and I serve as the owner's representative for Wayside Cross Ministry, or ministries on this project. As you, as-
Wait, do you, do you swear to your testimony is the truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Oh, I will do my best. Good evening, my name is Kristall and I serve as the owner's representative for Wayside Cross Ministries on this project. First and foremost, I want to assure the board and everyone present that this facility is exclusively for youth aged seventeen and younger. It is not and will not be used as a rehabilitation center, a warming kitchen, or a general shelter. Rather, it is designed to be a safe and nurturing environment, a youth activity center focused on serving some of the most marginalized members of our community. Our goal is to help these young individuals grow and develop strong, godly character. We understand the apprehension from some of our neighbors and we are committed to being good stewards of this community. We want to be a positive influence on the Village of Montgomery, not only by serving its youth, but by partnering with the community to help shape law-abiding, productive citizens. To that end, we have worked closely with the development department, specifically Sonia and Tony, to revisit the zoning designation, as you've heard. Initially marked as B-one, we are now proposing to remain R-one with a special use designation. Additionally, we've collaborated with the village to draft both an agreement and a covenant that strictly limits the property's use to the proposed youth activity center. To clarify further, the property will be used solely for the intended youth programs. The open field to the northeast will remain unchanged. Operating hours, as you have heard, end at seven PM Monday, Monday through Saturday. We, there will be no occupation on Sundays. The majority of these hours will be, will be limited to staff presence. We are here this evening to address any questions or concerns you may have. In that regard, Steve Silva of Silva Architects is with us and will speak to the design and functionality of the proposed building and landscaping. We appreciate your time and consideration and we look forward to continuing our work together in a spirit of transparency, cooperation, and community. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Steven Silva of Silva Architects and I'm here to present to you, I have to-
Alright, you swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. So, why don't we just go through the screens? I'd like to, let me back up here. Here's this. Alright, let me just talk about the screens as they come up here as I try to work the technology here. It's my nemesis. So what these are here are photometric plans that show the lighting fixtures and the light levels on the site. There's a view on the lower right is a night vision of the site, looking from Sherman Street towards the, towards the building. We're trying to use not indirect lighting, so lighting is also pointing down or light fixtures that you won't see the lens on the light fixture. Something to say.
Try to rescue it here.
Yeah, thank you very much. Can you hear me? I tried to move.
Do you want to start with the elevation side?
Yeah, let's start at the beginning, and if I could just scroll through it, then I'll change.
You should be able to scroll through.
Okay. Down arrow?
Left or right?
Left or right, okay. Thank you, thank you, Steve. Rescued. This is a view as you approach the building from Sherman Street, near the parking lot and the turnaround in the front. We'll get to that in a little bit. We tried to use different materials, the traditional materials that you would see in the neighborhood. Some we brought in or bringing in are a little bit more current in the technology, recycled materials, different scales like that. The massing is a prairie style, which we thought is a traditional in this part of the country. We're out here in Montgomery, which is out on the prairie, and thought it was appropriate to possibly use that. It helps to break down the massing of the building. It's a scale of a building that can be residential in character. The pitched roofs are residential in character, and that was the real genesis of why we went with this direction. It's welcoming port-cocher there for pickup and waiting for pickup, people dropping off to get into the building. On the left-hand side are the four classrooms with a direct access to the outside. Those will be used for tutoring, after-school homework programs, and there's a home economics room with cooking equipment in there to teach kitchen cooking techniques. On the right-hand side is the gymnasium, which is the big box that, you know, it's hard to hide a gymnasium in a residential neighborhood, so it stands out pretty prominently there. The middle area of the building is a multipurpose room, a couple of offices and administrative facilities in there, restrooms, utilitarian rooms. This is a view, another view, this would be seen from Douglas Street. As you're way far away from Douglas Street, so you really won't have a good view of it, and there's a row of pine trees on the west side of Douglas Street, so it's really going to be hidden back there, but it is, the massing is broken down. You can see that here, and a little bit of variety with the structure. This is another view of the front over by the gymnasium. On the right-hand side, you can see a little bit more pavement than we would like, but it's an area that is required by the fire department to have access on a minimum of two sides, I believe. So these grass pavers, it will probably look like grass in parts of it and not all brown like that when it's all fully grown in. Because of the gymnasium, we don't really have a lot of windows in the facility, hoping that the balls won't break the windows, obviously. This would be the view from the park on the west side. There will be another door in here at one point, access from the bathrooms, from the outside to the inside, direct access to the bathroom area there, which is that middle panel in the middle. This is just an elevation of the front of the building, straight-on view. This is a straight-on view of the south side of the, on the east side of the building, I'm sorry. No, it's the south side, south side of the building. From Sherman, you would see this. Again, it's going to be heavily screened by landscaping, and it's way far back from the street, so most people won't even know this building is there unless they're coming to it. Again, this is straight-on view of the west elevation. Am I going here? Okay, so here's the plan. I kind of reviewed that already. The central multipurpose room in the middle, checked-in vestibule at the front entrance, utility rooms, sprinkler room on the right, gymnasium, bathrooms in the rear, and the classrooms on the south side, on the left-hand side here. These are just two-dimensional drawings of the elevations with some additional information required, labeling materials, brick, stone, shingles, styles. Band of panels at the top are smooth panels that are still being defined and worked on at this point. Again, more information for the calculations for the amount of glass on the facade. The ordinance has a specific requirement on the main facade of the building. Because of the use, it's not really, doesn't lend itself to that, and because it's so far away, we're hoping that variance would be granted, that it really doesn't affect the quality of the neighborhood or the environment to have less glass in this building.
Actually, Steve, with the, staying with the residential zoning, the transparency requirement isn't there anymore.
Oh, anymore?
So it's not a variance that's required anymore.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you. Did all that work or nothing? So here's a view of the site plan, coming off of Sherman Avenue. Access to the St. Olaf's churches to the right and the residence on the right-hand side. Trying to make those as narrow as possible so people don't cross traffic between the two sites and like that. The turnaround is just to make it easy to come in and go, and we've reduced the parking calculation, accounts to enlarge the, lessen the depth of the stormwater detention area, which is to the south or to the lower left-hand corner, that oddly-shaped piece of landscape there. We hope to be able to use that functionally, but we're working with engineering on that and how deep the pond has to be and how, whether it has a wet bottom or whether it doesn't have a wet bottom, so that's still in progress. That's the building on the left-hand side. The shaded area is the pavement on the site. This is a landscape plan, shows you how, you know, really how far back the building is and how much landscaping is going to be in front of the building from the south side, and then from the west side, the row of trees along Douglas Avenue is shown there where, again, you really won't see the building. And then there's heavily, heavy landscaping along the north side to screen the property from the residential areas above that. There's also a small berm in that area as well. There's a small shed there, utility shed shown on the north side, too, that will house equipment and play gear and things like that, that they'll overflow storage for the building, for the property and the use. This is a photometric plan. It's too small to read, but it shows the light levels at the different areas of the site. And this is more depiction of the light levels, of the density of the lighting at the light poles and night view, and there's a view of the actual pole on the upper right-hand corner, so it's throwing the light, majority of the light, straight down. I think that's it. Any questions?
Actually, I just have one question. Just one question. Signage, it's all facing the east toward Douglas?
There is a signage shown on the elevation, and we thought we had a picture of the proposed elevation that would be over on Sherman Street. It's two piers pillars with a strip between them with the name of the organization on WayCM Youth Ministry, just the initials, WayCM Youth Ministry.
A monument sign?
Pardon me?
Is that a monument sign or?
It's a co-compliant sign. It's like two piers and a horizontal band.
It's a monument sign.
Seven feet tall, complies with all the requirements.
And everything follows the same type of things on that? The lighting on that still follows the same lighting plan?
It will, yes, yeah.
It's not shining in anybody's homes or anything like that?
If you put lighting on it, it would be, there's those little goose knicks on the top that just points straight down on top of it. That's probably what I would prefer if I, we'll review that with staff and make sure that it complies for sure.
And no other signs on the building?
There is one sign on the building over the main entrance.
But facing the, facing Douglas?
It faces west, or, yeah, faces east, rather.
Yep.
So from Douglas Street, it's going to be really small.
My main concern is just LED lights and homes and stuff.
No, it's not backlit signage. It'll be solid block letters with a overhead light, maybe a lighting in the soffit or something like that, yeah.
All right. All right. If there's nothing else from petitioners at this time, is there any, well, we could be one, I says, anything else from petitioners? All right. If there's nothing else from petitioners at this time, we'll open the public comment period to save time on the swearing-in. Anyone that would like to speak tonight, raise your hand, and if you swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, say I do. Thank you. All right.
Hi. I will call you up, and I'll do it two at a time, so people who are on deck know that they are on deck. So we will start with Jen Hines, and then after her will be Judith Brown.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jen Hines. I live at 1203 Douglas and here again to try to convince why this project for Wayside is not a good idea. Since they had to withdraw the previous petition, we're basically starting all over with all of our concerns, the recap of those concerns. We already have a lot of traffic. Even if they are going to be bussing people in, there's still that other thirty percent or more that would need to be commuting, and we already average over twelve cars per minute. I don't know when the last time we had a traffic study done, but those are my own observations, and I did a detailed report and sent the letter over. We've also had multiple shootings, murders in the area, the homeless population we already are having issues with. And then it's also on the border of Montgomery or Aurora and Kane County, so it's kind of like the Wild West already due to all the boundary issues and the policing of the, with all the different districts and companies. We've also had previous issues in the past with Wayside in regards to housing murders and rapists. We've also had concerns about noise, light pollution, drainage issues. There's also, they were previously talking about the extension to Elliott, and then there's two homes in the way there, so what's going to happen with those homes? Because I heard the Aurora presentation, and that kind of made me even more nervous. There's also, they're looking for loopholes as far as signage goes, because they were saying that they wouldn't say Wayside, but they have a bus that's permanently parked right outside the facility that says Wayside Cross Ministries. They say that after seventeen, the kids are no longer able to participate, so then what happens to the kids? Do they turn to gangs? What's the plan there? And then also, too, the previous gentleman, he mentioned that the design is to make it look like it's out on the prairie, but yet they want to take the prairie away. Then he also said, too, that it stands out. Well, no kidding, it doesn't belong in our community. And then I was able to locate the Unified Development Ordinance, thanks to the help with Mr. Tony, and I looked at page 113 through 115 of that. And in there, it's blank in R1 as far as when it comes to the clubs and lodge and all those, because those special-use terms were for B1, B2, and MD. Also, too, what's the height of the building? Is it going to be thirty-five feet more? Because in the blank space, it says that there's absence of the use from the table indicates that the use is not allowed within the designated zoning district. With these new zoning special requirements, what are we opening up the door for? Because if we're going to make exceptions for a club or lodge, what else could there possibly come in and try to use those requirements? Like, I mean, somebody could try to argue a strip club's a club. Or also, too, like, heaven forbid, maybe a bunch of Satanists want to put in a club. Are we going to stop them? I mean, they're already putting their monuments to the Congress in our Capitol Building for Then they also were alleging, too, previously, that property values could possibly go up with this project. Well, I did my homework on that, and the cases I found where they tried to say that something like this would help boost property values, those previous things that were on there before, it wasn't open green space. Like, there was one study from Lincoln, Illinois, where it used to be a former asylum that had been abandoned for years. Well, of course, it's going to be an upgrade if somebody knocks that down and puts something else up. I also included in my detailed email that there's different studies as far as green space goes and parks and how those can significantly improve property values. R1 should be single-family homes. As far as St. Olaf goes, when you look at their website, they barely mention Wayside Cross, even though they've been partners for years, apparently. That's why we didn't even know what they partnered until that bus rolled up. So in closing, there are other options out there. We don't have to build on an empty lot. Like, there's a church for sale, or former church, I should say, in Oswego. It was the Cornerstone Christian Church. That's up for 725K. Or the former Sacred Heart campus on Lake in Aurora, 470K. They could repurpose old buildings rather than adding into our community and taking away from us.
Good evening. Judith Brown. You're going to get tired of seeing me. This is the sixth meeting that I've spoken to. About fifty-eight years ago, my husband and I built our home. I'm a volunteer on the beautification committee for the village of Montgomery. I want things to be beautiful. This is a lovely building. I appreciate the work that has been done to resubmit the lighting, the parking, whatever for the building, the homework that they've done. But we've heard the objectives as to, and the purpose of this building. As Jen just said, we in the neighborhood didn't realize that something, a group like this was meeting at St. Olaf's. I appreciate St. Olaf's Church. They need the money, just like your church and my church does. I understand they want to sell the property. This building is going to serve people that don't live in my neighborhood. I'm asking you, you folks, would you want this in your backyard? I will stand at my kitchen window and look right out at this building. It's not what we want. This is a residential area that you're asking us to accept this building. I repeatedly ask you folks, as well as the village board, to drive by this area and look at where they want to put this building. I hope you've done so. I hope you felt like you needed to do that. You are, I hope, taxpayers, residents of the village of Montgomery. I hope you represent we people who are objecting to this project in our backyards. Not your backyards, but ours. These are not residents of the village of Montgomery. Thirty percent will become, coming into the facility locally. The other seventy percent, they're going to bus in. As Jen said, why not utilize existing buildings or build someplace in an area that's conducive to this? We financially, in the neighborhood, support the village. There won't be any revenue to the village of Montgomery with this facility. I hope that you, as committee members, feel some loyalty to support we as residents, and I ask you to use common sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
All right. Next, we have, is it Joni Britton on Canterbury? And then after that, we have Ray Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Joanie Britton. I'm a member of St. Olaf Lutheran Church. My husband Dan's the president of the church council, and I did speak at the last meeting, and I have listened to your concerns, and I just want to again summarize the importance of this mission. For the past fourteen summers, our church has hosted the Urban Youth Program by Wayside Cross in our church basement. This program is for seven weeks, five days a week. Please know that we are honored to host this mission. This program serves seventy students each summer. Their ages range from five to seventeen. No students will drive to our church. They will be picked up and returned each day using the Wayside Cross vans. Wayside Cross wants to expand this program and reach more children. We feel blessed and delighted that they have asked us to buy some of our property so that they can accomplish this goal. This program teaches about God. You cannot teach about God in a public school setting. Huntington Learning Center will also partner with Wayside Cross to tutor these students academically. When one is on grade level, she or he is less likely to create behavioral issues. The children will learn basic food preparation and enjoy an indoor basketball court. This youth center will only be open until 7:00 PM. It will never be open on Sundays. Nobody lives at this center. We want these children to become responsible, productive members of our community. To conclude, we truly believe that everyone will benefit from the building and use of this gymnasium for our children. I thank you for your time and attention.
After Mr. Anderson, we have Dan Britton.
My name is Ray Anderson. I'm eighty-six years old, and when St. Olaf opened their door in nineteen sixty-nine, before some of you were even born, my wife and I were there when they opened the door, and we're still there. And there's been a lot of programs, we're talking about Wayside Cross, but there's been other programs that have been going on at St. Olaf for a lot of years. At one time, they had a large tent in the parking lot, and we had tent meetings. We had music, and testimonies, and preaching, and all kinds of things. And then we had, thirty years ago, we added an education wing, and that opened up our basement, more bathrooms, more office space, and so that was a blessing. We got approval for that. We've, we've been blessed to, for twenty years, we had a preschool, and then kind of the money dried up from the government and stuff, so our preschool closed a couple of years ago. We had a wonderful preschool, and they're, they're talking about Jesus, and that's what we're, that's, that's, we're in the business of changing lives. And I listened to the young lady, and, "The school bus is going to be gone, so that's, you won't have to look at that any longer, neither will we, so the school bus is going to be gone." But for the last fourteen years, I have been involved with Robin Stirkel and Urban Youth Ministries. I have been down the basement a lot of days every week, and I've seen what goes on. And that's what we're in the business. We talk about the shootings and things, we listen to the news, it's kind of depressing to listen to the news any longer. But that's what we want to, that's, we're in the business of changing lives, not just throwing a basketball around or learning how to make some other kind of food. Robin Stirkel is one of the best motivators, educators that I've been around. I'm a retired school teacher, so I know a little bit about, and I was a principal, so I know a little bit about evaluation on, on teaching. But I can see these little kids come in, this, sixty kids come in every day, and I have seen some of the kids in tears because they're sorry for what they've done to other people, and they want to make a change in their life to serve Jesus. The federal government can change all the rules, and you guys can pass rules and stuff, but the only thing that's going to change our world is if people get back on their knees and worship Jesus. And there's so many of these young kids, sixty kids a day, that are, they're, they're hearing different values than what they're used to at home. Yes, there's a lot of stuff going on, but the summer camp is just an awesome place. If you can, you can, next summer, you can call me, I'll set up a time, Robin won't know when you're coming. I'll take you personally down the basement, and we'll let you see what's going on during the day. It's an, it's an awesome, awesome program, and lives are being changed. A lot of these kids are being raised by themselves, no mom and dad, and if you can just see, you have to be there to see it. So I thank you for the opportunity. I thank you for Wayside Cross that's willing to put up this beautiful building and give us a chance. Our basement is, is full. We can't take on anymore. So that's why this beautiful gymnasium is being built, so that we can reach more kids. And the final thing is, Jesus is the answer.
Thank you.
Dan Britton?
Good evening, everyone. I'm president of St. Olaf Church Council, and as Ray has said, St. Olaf has been in Montgomery since nineteen sixty-nine. We've partnered with Wayside Cross Ministries, and their last name is Ministries by definition, spiritual work or services. This is what they do. Some folks have commented that they didn't realize that we had youth in our basement for fourteen years. That's kind of a testimony to the conduct and the behavior and the education that these children are getting. I've been up at these past meetings, and I really don't have much more to say than what I've said in the past, but I am glad to see that we are changing the zoning to residential, which will, I believe, help alleviate some of the residents' concern. But the residents have talked about their green space. This is St. Olaf's property, which we would like to use for the benefit of Wayside Cross's mission to help minister to these children. I would ask that you strongly consider approving this zoning. Thank you.
Next we have, I'm sorry I can't read your name on the sheet, but the address is, I think, 291 Sherman?
Good evening. My name is Dee Taylor. I live at 291 Sherman Avenue. Some of my questions have been answered tonight, some have not. I have a hard time reading in the dark. What happened to the electricity?
Oh, sorry, we are having some technical difficulties, so the electrical system for the lighting is not working tonight.
It's okay.
Do you want me to turn the lantern on? Do you have questions? The button's on the side.
Thank you.
If you hit it again, it won't be as bright.
Thank you, that's nice. Okay. All right. Maybe I'm mistaken, but back in April, at the meeting I was at, they told us they were going to bus thirty children in, and they wanted to build this new building. Well, and then they were going to add children to that, which is fine. Do any of you live on Sherman Avenue? Anybody? Well, I'm worried about the dust, the mud, and they, you guys just fixed my road two, three years ago, and they're going to tear it up with these big trucks carrying cement back and forth, and there's going to be a lot of it, because that little thing that you saw in the dark is not anything but a driveway. It's going to be heavy cement. So it's going to take a lot to do what they want with it. I'm glad to see that they changed their restrictions, and they were wanting to stay with residential. What does Montgomery get out of this? Anything? Do they get taxes? Do they get anything? Probably not, because, you know, the people that are building this are tax-free. So, there's kids, where they're going to put this walkway or driveway, I see kids walking down that all the time that live up the hill from me, over in, you know, down further on Sherman Avenue, and now they're going to have to go all the way around, cross two streets, and that's not right. How close is it from the, from the building, the new building, to the school? You know, is it, is it close enough that if they decide to take something other than this is a vocational school and make it something else, is there enough reason to believe that they won't? I smell a rat in the woodpile. And since they're nonprofit, where is all this money coming from? To buy the land, to build this beautiful building? And who's going to pay the teachers? You know, if, if you have retired from your job, and you've worked one to five years, and you want to teach, that's fine, but if you get back and find that... Excuse me, just a minute. Okay. I'm going to skip that. Why do we need a retention pond? They're going to put fifty-five stalls in this new building. A basketball court is ninety-four feet long, fifty feet wide, and that doesn't include the walkway or seating, so to speak, and the basket has to be ten feet off the floor where they, from the playing floor to the top of the basket. They never showed us anything. I mean, everything is in tiny print. They don't want us to know what they're doing. They're hiding. Which makes me think in time, they may come to the fact that they'll make another Hesit House out of this place, bring in unwanted drugers, unwanted ex-cons, and anything else you might desire. If we have, why do we need a retention pond? Well, it draws mosquitoes, it draws animals, it draws geese, and geese defecate wherever they feel like it. They do it in the grass, in the sidewalks, in the air. Your driveways will be full, and so will your, your houses. How about coming out of church and find out that, that they're flying overhead and splat right on the neck? You know, it's happened, and it's not pleasant. They told me that it, or said on the paper that it was going to be a one-story building, but half of it's two-story, which I understand that's the basketball courts. Is that going to affect the, I don't know east, west, north, or south from the picture, but if that is going to cut out the sun for the school, is it that close? You know, is it, is it going to? The kids play in that, they have fields over there where they play ball, where they play, you know, whatever. They've got a play, a play place for the younger ones. I just, I'm not in favor of this at all. I think that, you know, I'm willing to let the, the kids come into the neighborhood. I'm willing to let them learn, but who's going to pay the teachers? You're not going to have somebody come five days a week to teach a child something, and then, you know. And, and if you've only worked a job for a year to five years, that's the only thing you can teach without a certificate. So that's the only thing that person is going to learn. He's got no chance for advancement. He's got no chance for anything. He's stuck. And if that particular job in the future becomes MI, or if it becomes, you know, deleted by a machine, that guy's right back to square one. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
All right, there's nobody else on the list?
Come forward, state your name.
Hi, Dan Knapp, 1203 Douglas Avenue. They, St. Olaf is, you know, they're a faith-based institution, and they have a lot of hope. They have a lot of faith in the community and what they do. And they, they're here today, and they talk a lot about hope and how they want to transform, work with Wayside to transform these kids. But what's interesting to note is in the Chicago Tribune or Beacon, they've lost about two-hundred-and-fifty parishioners. And it's quite concerning that if they can't keep their parishioners, how will they keep and hold these very precious lives close to them for long enough for these kids to be very successful down the road? If anyone's a CEO of a nonprofit institution, you know that if you have one major funder, chances are you're going to adopt the policies of that funder. With the flight of all these parishioners, I'm very worried that St. Olaf is, this is a survival play, that they're partnering with Wayside because they need the money, they need the support, and, and part of that's pretty concerning. Now, a few people here in a few weeks ago have talked about the types of people we're worried about in our communities. And it's sometimes hard to say the words, rapists, drug addicts, right, and other sorts. And it's nice that we've tried putting in some policies to mitigate this. They're only going to have kids who are seventeen and under. They've looked at the signage, and are trying to change the signage so it doesn't say Wayside. But as they've talked about in prior meetings, make no mistake, they said, one bank account. Those who work in the shelters, although they're not present here today, they're one institution, and they're very much here today, even though they're not present. and they're very much here today, even though they're not present here today. And we're very much worried about the types of crowds coming into our communities that are already within our communities, the murders, the shootings that are already currently happening. They're creating a building where they're inviting kids, and they're gonna invite the family members to come into these events as well. If you do Google, a Google search of sexual offenders in our area, you're gonna have lots of bubbles popping up. And how is Wayside and St. Olaf screening for any of these families, any of these adults from coming into their institution? And even though they may not be coming into Wayside, what's to stop St. Olaf from becoming a warming center or housing any of these individuals? I don't know if that's a possibility that they would be able to do, but that's a question that I have for all of you. Right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional public comments? Please, please step forward and state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Dan Haas. I'm the new interim pastor at St. Olaf's. I was a pastor in Aurora for 40 years before taking this position. I've worked with the Aurora Police Department as a chaplain and on violence issues since the late 1980s. Maybe I'm uninformed, but how many murders has Montgomery had in the last year? I'm not aware of any, and the city of Aurora only had one last year, and since 2010, when they had zero, the maximum they've had is five. So, I hear a lot of talk about there's murders around and so on, but I'm, I'm unaware of them happening. Maybe there are shootings. But the answer to the question of who is, or what does Montgomery get out of this is very simple. The reason that center is being built where it is is because it's an educational facility that helps students in an after-school program. And the school that's gonna be near, Krug, is the lowest-performing school in District 131. Wayside has a great track record in helping students who are struggling, helping them improve academically. They can bring you a large list of students that have been in this program over the last 10 or 15 years, that have gone on to succeed in college, have great professions. They are taking these kinds of kids in, in the East Aurora School District and doing really well. So who's gonna benefit in, in Montgomery from this program? Your children are. That's who's gonna benefit. It's not a benefit to the church, it's gonna be to the children who live in this community. Those are the, those are the children that are benefiting from this program that's been in the city of Aurora for years. And I just wanna lay those fears that somehow they're gonna draw or be a magnet to students outside of that, or students that aren't currently in their program. These children have standards they have to, to live by in terms of their conduct. They're not gonna be drawing in students that live outside of that, those, those rules. If they change their lifestyle, they're welcome, but if not, they can't continue to attend. So, I mean, I think the safety mechanisms that have been part of this program for years are going to continue. They have not had problems in their after-school program with children that attend, and they, but they've been a huge, huge benefit to your children educationally. They have a STEM program that comes in. There are children in the city of Aurora that wait years. There's a signup sheets to get in that STEM program that students at Krug School in your neighborhood are gonna have access to. So, I just wanna assure you that the benefits to your community are gonna be your children. The quality of education that they're gonna have access to in tutoring programs afterwards is gonna be enormous. It's not going to draw other concerns that you have to the neighborhood. I want you to know that St. Olaf's isn't profiting financially from having this program, and that they're gonna continue to be a great neighbor, gonna continue to do other things that are beneficial to, to the community. But this, this project will have a great impact on that school, at least I hope it will. That's why they're coming here, and I think that's gonna benefit the residents in this neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional public comment? Yeah, yes.
I, as a resident, and had three sons that went to Krug School, Waldo Junior High, and graduated from East Aurora, am offended that not only by this gentleman speaking negatively about East Aurora, one of the village board members spoke negatively and has statistics. They're talking about these children coming from West Aurora, too. They're not going to be able to hold this class, this, these classes, or this type of ministry at Harkness Center, at the Presbyterian Church in Aurora. So that's why they need this building, and they're bringing children in from all over. So please, it's not going to benefit just Krug's children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sonya, is there anyone on the Zoom?
Nobody has their hand raised.
All right, thank you. All right, sir, if you'd like to come forward. Please state your name.
My name is Alan Reynolds, and I'm a member of St. Olaf's Lutheran Church here in Montgomery. And a few years ago, I read about what was happening in a suburb of Dallas, Texas, Oak Cliff, where there was a pastor named Tony Evans. And in that neighborhood, there was a lot of violence, a lot of people that were absentee from school, a whole lot of problems. And what he did, he put in place a mentoring program for these difficult young people within the high school. And an amazing transformation took place in Oak Cliff. You can read his book, I think it's called Unity Embraced, talks about how drastic reductions in violent crime. People were not so absent from school as before, and there were, he's the, I think, the chaplain for the Dallas Cowboys. He had people who were members of that football team who were mentoring in the program. And it's amazing to read that book and see the transformation that took place in that high school in that community because of the Christian ministry that he introduced there. And I think that kind of impact could also take place here. So that's just what I wanna say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, not the hearing. All right. And we'll open up for any discussion, questions from the board? Okay, if we don't have any discuss, um, questions or discussions or additional items, we will close the public hearing. Go ahead. Okay. And we'll look for a motion to approve the hearing for the text amendment of club, lodge, or hall, with the considerations and the option of the findings effect.
So, and just to clarify, the text amendment, because there was a question by one of the audience members, the text amendment is amending the definition of club, lodge, or hall, and adding it as a special use to the R1 district only, not any of the other residential districts. So that is specifically the amendment that's before you.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and motion, PZC 2025-008, Part 1 for the text amendment, and the conditions to be met.
And the option of finding effect. Do I have a second? All right, Jill, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
No.
Commissioner Yekitis?
No.
All right, so we have a vote of three to two. Since we don't have four yeses, this won't go forward as a recommendation, just a vote count.
Thank you. All right, the next item is PZC 2025-008, Wayside Cross, Part 2, item, public hearing and consideration of special use for club, lodge, or hall. We'll open the public hearing. Does staff have any additional comments? All right, does petitioner have any additional items they'd like to discuss or introduce? All right, we will open the public comment period for this item.
Any additional comments?
All right, we'll close the public comment period. Any additional discussion topics, questions? All right. If not, we will close the public hearing. We'll look for a motion to approve Part 2 of the PZC 2025-008, Wayside Cross, for the special use for, of club, lodge, or hall.
I'll move to approve, PZC 2025-008, Part 2, special use, with the conditions and findings of fact met.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Jill, roll call, please.
Is that Baum, the second?
Yeah, that was Mike.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
No.
Commissioner Yekitis?
No.
All right, same for that one. This will go through as a vote count. Since we don't have four, it doesn't go forward as a recommendation.
Thank you. All right, so the next item is, again, PZC 2025-008, Wayside Cross, Part 3, Item 3 here, public hearing, consideration of the preliminary and final plat of subdivision. We will open the public hearing at this time. Staff, any additional items? Petitioner, additional items, discussions? All right, we will open the public comment period again. Any additional public comments? Nothing online. All right, we'll close the public, public comment period, and we'll look for any board, any further board discussion, questions? Nothing from the board, so we close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve Part 3 of the PZC 2025-008.
Motion to approve Part 3, PZC 2025-008, the preliminary final plat, with the conditions met and the finding of facts.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, we have roll call, uh, roll call, please, Jill.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
No.
Commissioner Yekitis?
No.
This will not go for recommendation, but the vote count will go?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Same as the other two. All right, we'll move on to the last point there for Part Number 4, which is the public hearing, consideration of multiple variations, including variations from Section 7.02, subdivision design and layout, and then variation from Section 11.06, buffer yards. We will open the public hearing. So again, any additional comments from the staff? Petitioners, anything else? All right, we will open the public comment period at this time. Any additional comments? All right, we will close the public comment period, and then any additional comments, questions on this item from the board? All right, if no additional comments or questions, we will close the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion to approve Part 4 of the, that item.
Motion to approve Part 4, PZC 2025-008, consideration of multiple variations. Do I have to read the variations?
Um...
Okay. With the conditions met and the findings of fact.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Jill, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
No.
Commissioner Yekitis?
No.
Thank you. Again, that item will not go for recommendation, but the vote count will be sent to the, to the village board meeting on May 27th, which is Tuesday after Memorial Day. All right, that concludes the main portion of this. I guess we'll go on to community development updates and new business. Director App.
All right, we don't have, really have much of an update at this time.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much, everyone, for attending the meeting. Our next meeting will be June 5th, Thursday, 2025, and we are adjourned for tonight.